All right, good evening all, it's 7:05 and I'm gonna call the order, the city council meeting for Monday, October 16th to order. Will you please join me in a flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any announcements, is there any additions to the agenda? No? Is there any declaration of ex parte contacts, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? Here none? Are there any appointments? No? This is an opportunity for public comment and I will ask that if you want to speak on the general business ordinance 1065 tonight, let us know, or you can take your opportunity now for a public comment. It looks like the two folks that are signed up are for the ordinance. You want to speak now or do you want to wait till later? It's up to you. Okay. Mary, is that what you wish as well? Okay, thanks. Thank you. Any other public comment not related to the ordinance tonight? Don't hear any? So with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. What would the council like to do for consent agenda from October 2nd?
Mr. Mayor, this is Council Patty. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved to second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Move on with presentations. Julia?
Yeah, so this evening, it's sort of a presentation slash one of our community partners. We have Sheriff Nick Hunter from Marion County who's gonna come and share with you what he's doing in Marion County. Thank you very much for coming.
Welcome Sheriff.
Welcome. Thank you. Mayor, City Councilors. Make it green. Now you guys sound like the commissioners. Turn your button on, make it green. I appreciate the opportunity just to come and address you all. So, as many of you know, I became the appointed sheriff about three months ago, taking over for Sheriff Joe Casta, who retired. Since that time, this is what I've been doing. And so, it's really a chance to get out in the community. One of the things that's been very important for me is to address other communities, understanding the uniqueness of all the communities that make up Marion County. And so, to truly understand a community, I have quickly learned that you have to meet people where they are. And so, if you look at our communities, especially when it comes to public safety, everybody has unique needs. And so, whether it be violent crime, whether it be theft, not everything is occurring in substantial numbers in every place. And so, for us to really tailor our services, we have got to look at what are the community needs and how do we continue to do that. For you all, one of the biggest things that we do is collaborate with the State and Police Department, with Chief Johns. And what are her needs for her agency? And how can we help supplement those needs? And in turn, how can she continue to help us? Like many agencies at this point, we have a staffing issue going on. And so, we are trying diligently to get that staffing on the road. But until we're able to do that, what we can do to collaborate with our smaller cities that make up Marion County, especially with those cities that have police agencies, that's how we provide better services. And when we talk about public safety, public safety is not simply us, it's not the State and Police Department. Public safety is everyone. It's everyone in the community being involved and looking at livability and how do we improve that livability? And that gets down to addressing those specific issues. You will find from me that I get past the superficial, I want to know what the root of problems are. If we continue to throw Band-Aids on superficial problems, we're not solving them. We're just merely moving the, sort of, the mark down the road, so to speak. So, we truly have to look at how do we do that? And for us in Marion County, when we talk about the unincorporated areas versus the city, that's us partnering with the city. That's us looking together, whether it be Stateon, whether it be Sublimity where we have a contract, or whether it be the city of Salem and the large populace of the city of Salem. That still requires collaboration to solve those problems. And so, we can't operate in silos, we've got to operate together. So, this is why I appreciate being here, having the chance to talk to you all, sort of address the community needs, some things that we are working on at this time at the county level through the commissioners. If you saw board session last week, we've brought up ballot measure 110. Ballot measure 110, there's a proclamation at this point to try and repeal ballot measure 110. But we want to be very clear about what that looks like. And the true intent of 110 to get folks into services, to get folks into treatment, there's nothing wrong with that and we completely agree. We are not going to arrest our way out of this problem. And jail for these folks is when you have that substance abuse and that addiction problem, jail's not the answer. Treatment is the answer. But what unfortunately has happened is through ballot measure 110, we are unable to incentivize those folks into treatment. We have fantastic programs, I think you guys have probably been introduced to at some point, but the lead program for instance, which is law enforcement assisted diversion. It is not meant for jail. But what it allows is we have specialized lead navigators that work for us, that are allowed to and go out in the community when we talk about behavioral change. Behavioral change comes from rapport, which leads to influence, which leads to persuasion. But without that rapport, we can't get to influence, excuse me, influence and persuasion. And what those navigators give us is they have the chance, they've lived the life, they've been there, they've changed their lives, and they have the ability to go into community in areas where we can't. And they can build rapport. But through the partnership that we have with them, we can then support them in that and we make law enforcement, not the enemy, we make law enforcement, those folks that are coming here to help you, to get you through these issues because we want you to be viable members of the community. We want you to contribute to the communities that you live in and the communities that we serve. We all live in these communities as well. So, ballot measure 110, looking to change how ballot measure 110 is currently written and what it took away from us is something that we are big and focusing on at this point. Another one that you may be familiar with is the aid and assist program. Aid and assist is, without getting into it because I know you guys don't have four hours for my presentation tonight. Aid and assist is working with our mental health population and our mental health population that's coming into the jails. And so, when they come into jails and we then send them to OSH on a 370, there's requirements that the state has to, one, provide treatment to that, but they need to provide those restorative services and then let us know, is that person able to assist in their own defense or can they not? And so, there's a break in the link in the chain in that. And so, we're very much focused on fixing that and looking at the state and having the state provide the services that only the state can provide, but so that we can continue, again, not to put folks in jail that don't belong in jail, because that's the last place they need to be when they're talking about restorative services. But we're also being overwhelmed on, we have a special PO and so, through Health and Human Services, we have a restoration program as well. But that functioned at one point with about 20 people and now that has over 60 clients that are in the restoration services program. So, trying to create some balance there as well. Some of the things that we're working on at the county level when it comes to kind of big, when we talk about legislation and other things like that, at the agency level, nope, I'm working on the relationships. For me, it's based on communication. It's how do we communicate with people and finding a better way to communicate with people? I use Socrates, I like Socrates, but every conversation should involve candor, intelligence, and goodwill. And if we can do that, we improve the way that we are always having conversations with people. And it gets to right back to ballot measure 110, it gets back to ballot, the aid and assist program, but we need to do that. The other thing we need to do is listen better. When we talk about listening, it's active listening. It's actually hearing what someone is saying instead of jumping to a conclusion and then quickly moving to solve a problem when you didn't truly understand the problem in the first place. So, kind of, within my agency, those are some of the things I'm working on. I'll touch on one more point and then I'll see if you guys have any questions. But on the last side of that, I know what is on everybody's mind and they, we want to talk about the homeless population, we want to talk about the homeless problem. Some of those are very simply those tools that we're talking about. That's the aid and assist. That's another one that's going through is our MCRT, which is our program where we put law enforcement with a qualified mental health professional and put them in the same car and allow them to respond to calls. Some of those things are sort of on the block as to maybe taken away from us. All of these are contributing ballot measure 110, that the aid and assist, to that homeless population. And we need to continue to have the tools to address the homeless population, to address the mental health issues within the homeless population, and to address the substance abuse and the addiction issues within that homeless population. Those are what allow us to then get people into services, treatment and other things, which then address, again, my word of livability. And livability for all of our communities here in Marion County. So, kind of a bit about me, a bit about the agency, a bit of what we're doing, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have. I appreciate the opportunity to come and address you all.
Anybody having questions for Sheriff? Comments? Council Patty?
Sheriff, thank you so much for coming and speaking to us. I gotta say, this has been insightful or informational to hear, I guess, overall, kind of what the county's doing, especially for the advocacy, for getting folks help at the state level, at the hospital. I guess my only question, I'm just kind of curious, maybe you could touch on a little bit Marion County, like victim advocacy services through the Sheriff's Department, if anything? Do you have a program like that?
We do. So, the wonderful thing about the Sheriff's Office is my office is made up of four divisions. And one of those divisions that we have is Community Corrections. Community Corrections is a state program, but for Marion County, we have that under the auspice of the Sheriff's Office. Within that Community Corrections Division, we do have that victim advocacy program. And so, that victim advocacy program kind of spans a lot of different aspects of law enforcement. But Annette Krismer is our victim advocate and gives us those opportunities, especially where you're working through those domestic violence crimes is a significant one. And how do we address domestic violence? How do we look at those relationships where people don't feel the security to get out of those relationships? That's something we have to address. Again, the root problem, it's not responding and the person goes to jail for a few days or something like that. It's truly looking at what is the situation and then providing those folks with the resources to feel confident that they can get out of that, but they can get out of that and they can survive. And once they survive, now we want them to thrive. But we've got to start with just simply giving those feelings that comes from victim advocacy. So, that's a great question, sir.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, I appreciate you sharing your thoughts on that and I look forward to seeing that program grow and expand and things like that and really serve the residents of Marion County. So, thanks for speaking on it.
Sure.
Anybody else? Sheriff Hunter, thanks. Appreciate you coming.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
With that, we will move on to general business, ordinance number 1065, amending the municipal code related to camping. Julia?
Yes, thank you. What is before you this evening is a, an ordinance basically adopting modifications to the camping ordinance that council adopted in July. But it took a lot more time, we did a lot more outreach, we had some, we heard from service providers, we heard from a lot of the community, we had a survey of over 650 respondents over the course of several months, as well as the homeless task force to get you the recommendation that's in front of you this evening. Essentially, the task force recommendation is to modify the camping ordinance, to identify the undeveloped right-of-way off Wilco Road as a location where overnight camping is not prohibited. The task force also recommended that camping be permitted between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 AM. And then, they also made some recommendations that are not included in the code amendments per se, but wanted council to discuss and provide direction on, to staff on moving forward with any or all of those, exploring basic, providing basic facilities at this location that, at the Wilco Road location, considering cost, health and safety needs, advocating for services to come to Stateon on a regular basis to provide support and resources for those experiencing homelessness, advocating for chariots to consider providing regional bus service to this location, to provide people with access to the services available in Salem, and then providing fencing or some demarcation of the area to differentiate the right-of-way from the private farmland. So, I'm not quite sure how you want to tackle that. You have before you the ordinance and if you approve the ordinance or ordinance with modifications, that's essentially one action, but then you also may want to have discussion on those recommendations from the task force as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Julia?
Do we want to start with, yeah, public comment?
Yeah, it's right after Julia's done.
Okay, great.
And I am done.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
Okay, opportunity for public comment. Deb Glaner, please.
Thank you for this time. I'm a little concerned about the recommendations that the homeless-
Let me stop you for a second. Do you have the button on?
It's green.
Okay, can you just state your address, please?
Oh, sure. 413 North 5th Avenue here in Stateon. I'm a little concerned about the recommendations that the homeless task force has provided as far as the transportation, having a bus service coming to pick up homeless people so that they could have services elsewhere. I really feel strongly that we need to curtail that bus transit in because we're getting more people coming in on the bus services that come out of Salem. I really feel like these people need help, but I also feel strongly that our community is not large enough to be able to fund that kind of service along with the porta potties and the water service. I understand you're thinking strictly on the Wilco property. I know there's some concerns about the farming that's next door on that property and spraying, and Mary Scott will probably elaborate on that. But I know these people need help, we just don't need the drugs and the sex offenders here in our community. I think there's got to be some other sources that these people can go to if they're located where there are services, it would be much better for them and I think better for our community to keep us safe. So, that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mary Scott?
I'm Mary Scott. My address is 1832 Kent Avenue here in Stateon. And I am part owner of the property that butts up to the right-of-way on Wilco Road. We're the family, we voted against it as soon as we heard about it. We're concerned, we rent that property out to a farmer and we're concerned about the well-being of that property when those people start coming in. I appreciate the thoughts about putting a fence up, that is really good. I was wondering if there's any limitation to how many no trespassing signs we ourselves can put up. We are concerned also, the farmer, he's doing his regular farming business. He's going to plow, which brings a lot of dust, he's going to spray, which a lot of times it comes from the north and it'll spray all over them. I know they'll be gone most of the day, but then all of their stuff is going to be full of spray at times. Sorry, lost track. We're just really concerned about our property and the welfare of what's going to happen to those people that are staying up there on the edge of our property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, let's start some council discussion. Council Julia, you want to lead?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, so, I wanted to start with a little, and I know, maybe we'll start, if sorry with you, could we start with just the ordinance itself before we go into the additional?
Sure.
The additional, I think that'll be helpful. I am largely in agreement with the ordinance as written, you know, I think still considering fencing and things like that to help kind of, in our discussion moving forward. You know, I would agree that it's not, you know, it's not an ideal location, but I think, I think as the task force has worked through it and as we went kind of through all the possible locations, you know, I think it's just the least worst of the options, if that makes sense. And it's, yeah, so, I think in general, I would agree with that recommendation from Wilco Roads, having that be the spot. The one thing that I would really like to highlight and propose an amendment for, you know, after maybe some discussion or at least start the conversation, is I am not in agreement with the recommendation to shorten the, sorry, to, is it, yeah, the decision was to increase the hours where camping was allowed by the task force. I would point to the fact that that option was not even included as one of the options given to the public in the survey, that the only options they were given were 12-hour, 10-hour, 8-hour, and 6-hour. And the task force did have an opportunity to add an additional option at that time, if that was something that they were considering at that time, which wasn't, yeah, which I think we were just considering no time restrictions. And I think when you consider the overwhelming support that there was for limiting the hours of, limiting the hours during the day that the survey had, and this is on page 10 and 11, and then, and then you look at the responses from the survey, I would support actually shortening the hours to a 10-hour timeframe, because I look at the support and I see almost 60%, maybe, it's above 50, or close to 60% of respondents who supported a 10-hour timeframe or less, from those who supported a timeframe. So, I would actually support making it a little bit shorter. So, but I think 12 is still better than the 14 that was proposed by the task force. I think the purpose of this survey was to get public feedback, to know where they're at, and I think it gave us some pretty clear responses on this question. And when you look at even the other, the supporting limits and stuff, a lot of those others were like, no time at all and things like that. So, I think you can even kind of put that in a bucket of people who were supporting less a timeframe. So, anyway, that's kind of where I wanted to kick it off. I think that's the main thing and then, and at this point, I think Wilco Road is the only one that I would be supportive of having on the list.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Patty?
Thank you. Real quickly, just so we can have sort of a discussion on this, and I've already viewed the homeless task force video on this, I'm aware of it, but Julia, if you would, just briefly cover why the hours of allowance were expanded from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM instead?
My recollection, and Counselor McDonald and Counselor Julia were there and you listened as well, so correct me if my recollection isn't right. Initially, the task force said 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. That was the 12-hour proposal. And then, there was discussion about, but if there are youth that are camping there, school and breakfast doesn't start until close to 8:00, and so, they kept the 6:00 PM timeframe, but extended it to 8:00 AM.
That's my recollection as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, Counselor McDonald, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the other idea behind that timeframe as well was that, this is suggested by one of the other task force members and the majority of the task force ended up agreeing that, you know, 6:00 PM is, you know, generally end of business hours for most places. I don't know if we can, the hope is that these people are during the day, you know, out looking for jobs or making something useful of themselves. And I think the expectations of those activities stopping at 6:00 PM is reasonable. I don't think that the hours of 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM are going to be particularly productive wherever they are. And giving them the ability to be in their tent or whatever after that time seems reasonable to me and to the majority of the task force, so that's why it was recommended.
Thank you. Another clarifying question, if I may?
Counsel Patty?
Thank you. So, in the recommendations the task force has provided, there's this advocacy for services to come to Stateon on a regular basis and also advocacy for chariots to consider providing regional bus services to the location. I'm just curious, in terms of staff time and resources, what does this advocacy look like? What's the fiscal impact? Those are my questions.
That's a great question. I think it depends on the direction from council. I mean, it could be a letter to chariots and a letter to service providers, it could be ongoing advocacy, I mean, it really, I guess it depends on if you wanted there to be advocacy, the level of advocacy that you would want to see.
Counsel Simms?
Can I answer your question?
Counsel Simms, go ahead.
So, as far as the hours go, I am not a proponent of expanding the hours. I would like to see something like 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM. You know, if we're talking schools, they're not going to be able to get into the school until 8:00 anyway to have breakfast, so I don't think we should expand the hours out till 8:00 AM. But 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM is what, kind of what I, is in my head as far as hours. And the other thing, Wilco Road, and I know it's probably the least of all the evils, but I also would like to see a backup also, such as the sewer plant, because there's really nowhere to park there. There's no parking whatsoever and we can't rely on the Ross parking lot or something like that. And that just, I think that's going to be an issue, because there are some folks that have vehicles, they're going to need a spot to park and there's just going to be no parking there. And then, they're gonna, you know, you have McDonald's close to there and Ross, so that's going to be an issue for folks going over there and using the restroom. That's why I do think a porta potty would be a good answer, because I think we're going to get a lot of pushback from some of the businesses that are going to be close to there, because, you know, you just, you can't stop that. People are going to use the restroom and they're going to want to go over to McDonald's or Ross, or somewhere close, one of the businesses that are close to there, use their restroom. And I don't think that's going to be a, make some of those businesses very happy, so I do think we need a few services such as a porta potty there. And I would like to talk about a secondary location also, like the sewage plant, myself. I think that's my favorite.
Counsel Patty?
Thanks. Quick question for staff. Have we had any folks taking advantage of the spots that are currently permissible for people camping?
No.
Okay. So, I would assume the answer to my next question is no, but have we had any kind of, anything like what Counsel Simms is talking about in those areas that we should be concerned of and would want facilities nearby for?
No.
Julia, what's the size of the Wilco property again? Do we know?
I think it's 325 or 225 by about 40.
Okay.
Sorry.
We've had a discussion in the past and I think, you know, my opposition to this, I don't want it to be any form of managed camping whatsoever. I don't want to, I don't envision this to be a spot where we drive in like a drive-thru and park for the night and go elsewhere. So, that is a concern for me. And that also brings me to the 72-hour street parking issue, which is that here will come across. I don't want Stateon to have areas like Portland does currently, where they can just go along Marine Drive or 82nd or somewhere of that nature and just park their stuff for hours on end. 72 hours is a long time for those types of vehicles to be parked there without any kind of ability to regulate. That's my concern.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counsel.
To that point, is it just code enforcement? Is it, Julia, is it just code enforcement that would deal with that issue?
So, police deals with vehicles parked on the street with an assist from code enforcement in identification potentially. Yeah, I mean, we, I don't envision us having those issues with a 72-hour because we will have the ability to move vehicles along. That doesn't mean that they necessarily will move far along or, you know, they still will exist, but you're not going to have the camps like I think you have in Portland, but, so I, did I, I don't know if I answered your question or not?
You did.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
To that point, I know for a fact that we're already not really abiding by that, so I'm not really, I don't think putting- so I'm not really, I don't think putting, let, shorter time constraint on that is really going to do much difference, to be honest. I don't like Wilco Road for the same reason that residents don't want camping next to their houses. As a business owner, people might look at your stuff as just your stuff, but that's someone's livelihood, and the increase in theft and property damage absolutely happens, and I'm not a fan of putting that in that area unless we can ensure that that's going to be policed and monitored, and for that reason, I would actually prefer the sewage plant, because I feel like we would do a better job of policing and managing that property instead.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Gilio.
I, I will just say, I think on the sewage plants, the reason why I, at this time, still prefer the Wilco Road, and would probably limit to the Wilco Road, would be that I think that the, some of the pushback that we received from the residents that were abutting that property at the sewage plant, as well as the letter that Lance sent in, I think there's just more potential for negative at that plant than there is at the Wilco Road. Not that I'm not necessarily open to it, but when I, when I see the Wilco Road, there's actually a pretty good space, so you have the farmland on one side, and the other side, you actually have kind of a, pretty much an empty parking lot with, with a fence, and then there's another fence before you really get to the whole major parking lot where the, the buses are at. It's not next to a, a commer, like, commercial business that's largely open to the public. It's still not, you know, ideal, ideal, but, but I think, given the options, like, I think it's, and also, I mean, you have also firing range at the sewage plant, there's a few other things that, I mean, maybe you could, we could be more specific with where next to the sewage plant. It is a larger piece of property, so maybe there is like a little bit more specificity that we could provide to, to limit and demarcate, okay, what spots are open around there, maybe that gets around some of it. But that's why at this point, I was still leaning towards the, the Wilco Road.
And can I ask if everybody had an opportunity to read Lance's letter that was submitted to the task force? Because if not, I would encourage you to allow him to come up and speak to his concerns.
Counsel, go with that. Lance, want to come up? Lance, can you please come up?
Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counsel McDonald.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Lance, I would just, just reiterate your, your main points from the letter you wrote to the, to the, the task force regarding that location, the wastewater treatment plant.
Well, there are a variety of reasons why I don't personally, this is a decision for the council. I'm looking out after, number one, the investment that our citizens have made in that wastewater treatment plant, they continue to make in that wastewater treatment plant, and the potential. Really, they can't hear me. All right, very good. That's a first. Again, as Public Works Director, I have met with my folks, and we have discussed these issues, and we've discussed what the ramifications are if we allow this. And we don't look at it just for ourselves, we look at it what we're doing, what we're tasked with, and that's running and operating the wastewater treatment plant, the only one that we have here in this city, and the only one that treats our neighboring city. And so, we've got 13,000 people that depend on us for their sewage to come to. We're talking about increasing the risk for people getting in there. It wouldn't take very long at all if they were to throw some toxins in one of our SBRs to completely kill the bugs that treat the facility, which means we can't treat any sewer. 3 million gallons a day of sewer coming into our plant would not be able to be treated, so I don't know what we'd do with that. We dump it into the river, and then we look for huge fines from the state? I just don't think it's a very good idea. There's, at the ground south of the plant, that is where we empty biosolids from our dryer on a daily basis, if not daily, every other day. We used to, when I first got here, we were taking them up to Brooks, to the burner, at a cost of $80,000 a year, and so what we're trying to do is save, again, save the citizens' money by using that available land south of the plant to dump the biosolids on. It is also our overflow, so if we have, as I explained to you folks many times, that our plant was designed at 2.7 million, 7 million gallons a day for a treatment plant. Since I've been here, I've seen 6 to 7 million gallons of sewer coming to our plant a day during high rain events. So if we were to ever have to overflow, our overflow goes right through that vacant property, right through a swale, and it's a containment area. So that's only going to really happen in the, in the wintertime, but you have to take in that into your account when you're talking about trying to find for people, find places for people to stay. Right now, I think I brought up a little earlier today, we're doing a mixing zone study down at the outfall of our wastewater treatment plant. We've spent probably $70,000 on instrumentation that is sitting down there right now. Very easily could be removed, the parts and components ripped out of it, taken to wherever they need to do, to sell them. I'm not saying this is going to happen, but, you know, we've got to think about places to put folks. We have a lot of investment down there that I don't, in my personal opinion, I don't think we want to risk, or increase the risk of that happening. The mixing zone study's got to be done by January. If that, if that, if that instrumentation was ever wrecked or stolen, we're done with that, and then we're not, we're going to be out of compliance with our MPDS permit as of January. So, there are a variety, I could sit, sit here and speak to you all day regarding this. I just don't think the risk, increasing the risk of adding people down there that have mental illness, potentially, I'm not saying all of them, all right? I, you know, it's, it's a tough situation that you're in, but from what I read, there's, you know, there's potential drug problems, mental illness problems, people that are in dire straits, that are looking for ways perhaps to get some money to go feed their issues, whatever they may be. The treatment plant's there, it's not monitored. We don't have a police force down there, we don't have security guards down there, we have a fence that could very easily be crawled in, and they've got millions of dollars of infrastructure they could just get into and try to get whatever they want, and if they don't like it, again, throw toxins in the SBR, and then we are really in a bind, because we have no way to treat our facility. I'll stop there. I'll, I'll answer any questions that you have, though.
Counsel Sims.
How often have you had overflow events that went into the bioswale?
Since I've been here, probably three or four times.
So, it, it is an issue, okay.
Anybody else? Thanks, Lance.
Thank you.
Counsel Or.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Julia, have we looked at how much it's going to cost us for the fence that we would put up, and where is that money potentially going to come from?
Honestly, no. I was waiting for direction, and we would get some estimates and bring that back to you. It's not something that would necessarily, you know, go up immediately, and I, I don't have an answer for where it would come from. I mean, we, we would probably, we'd have to find it from somewhere, because I think that would be important, and it depends on, yeah, we'll have to look at that and get some, some cost estimates of fencing. It could be a temporary fence, it could be a more permanent fence, and we'll have to run some different scenarios.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Or.
How often is, I know we don't want it to be managed, but how often is this site going to be, oh my gosh, I lost the word. Patrolled, and, okay, yeah, I'll go with that.
I, I can, I mean, the police right now, the officers, as, as time is available, but I believe, you know, daily, go by the existing sites at least once, if not multiple times. On Wilco Road, I would expect that they would be going by these sites much more often, because it's a major road and, you know, the way they get from A to B, a lot of places, so I think that the, it would be visually patrolled multiple, multiple times a day, and again, based on, you know, direction and as, you know, what, depending on what we see from the road, we would walk the site as needed, I would imagine, and, and deal with, you know, if there's stuff left behind. Just sort of speaking to Ms. Scott's comments, there, there will not be the ability to leave stuff behind, they, people would need to take their stuff with them. If it is left behind, we would, and, and it was seen and noticed, we would pick it up and retain it in accordance with state laws in terms of getting property.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
What can we do if someone doesn't get a permit and they're on this property, and then if we ask them to leave and they don't leave, what can we do?
This property does not require, would not require a permit. The only permits that would be required and is currently in the code is to, and it's currently allowed, where someone could get a permit to be on any other public property, so that, that's a situation, my understanding is, for example, when there was the, the bigger, more exciting eclipse than there was on, on Saturday, that's, or if there was an event that they wanted to have overnight camping, they could get a permit, but that's been on the books. What we're saying is, you don't have to get a permit to be in this location as long as you're between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, or 7, 8:00 PM, or 6:00 PM, 8:00 AM, or whatever you determine.
So what happens if they're not and they are still there?
The police would come and inform them of the rules, and inform them that they need to move off of the site, and if you have more questions about that, I would call Chief Johns to come up and talk to you about what her process would be from there.
Do you wish to have the chief come up? Counsel Or.
Yes, please.
Chief.
So if there's designated hours and they're outside those hours, of course, our first is to educate and let them know that they're outside of ordinance, and work towards compliance. As I've talked about before, we're obviously always dealing with behavior, and then we're also dealing with, how do we help to keep this from reoccurring? So are there resources that we can provide, are there places that, you know, they would choose to be, and how can we help facilitate it? You heard the sheriff speak about some other resources and options, so we're, we're always working with those currently, so we would, of course, continue with that, but if it became non-compliance, we've, it would be a trespass issue.
Go ahead, Counsel Gilio.
Chief Johns. Sorry, I had a question as well, that's why, sorry. I feel like this might be a little broad, but since you're up, I had a couple other questions as well, because as we're kind of touching in on the car issue as well, the parking issue as well, so, something I keep hearing about is like registration, so like, when a car, so we have the 72-hour rule for car being parked, but are there any regulations in terms of like a car having current regulation while being on a, like, having current registration, current, like, when parked on a street, things like that? Are there anything like that that is enforceable in the books?
So, when you say current registration, are you talking about name, address?
Like tags.
Are you just talking about the tags or current?
Yeah, like tags or current, the things that you can see on the car, current.
Right. So, in regards to that, there's a few issues. So, we issue tickets to people, and people are the ones that pay the fines, and so if we stop a vehicle, we can issue a ticket to the driver for having expired tags. As far as expired tags with a parked vehicle, that's when it falls under the ordinance or the code of storage of a motor vehicle. So, that is a, I'm trying to think of the right word. Basically, it's kind of like proof of, uh, storage of a vehicle. It's not in compliance with being current. So, again, though, we, if we're issuing a citation, at that point, it's putting it on the car to whomever may or may not come back to get the car, but it's, we're working towards, we can issue the warning to get it moved, we can issue a citation, and then ultimately have it towed. We've got to witness that it's sitting there and tag it, and, and do the follow-through with the process for it. So, we're not going to give a ticket to the car, but it's moving towards enforcing the ordinance of the storage of the vehicle.
So, would that include like current, things like current tags, or is that just like the hour, the hour limitation? Things like, would out-of-date tags kind of fall under that umbrella?
Right.
Or is it just the?
Right, under the storage.
Hourly.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would fall, storage of vehicle, current tags would fall under that umbrella that's currently in place?
Right.
Okay. I think that's my question.
Anybody else have any questions for Chief, or she walks out? Dismissed.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Gilio.
Since the conversation has included some of these other task force recommendations, I currently am not in favor of really any of these, except for considering some sort of demarcation that would help provide the different, like, show the difference between the right-of-way and the private farmland. My concern with advocating for chariots or services, or even the basic facilities of this location, is that I don't want to highlight this location. I do not, I do not want to see a, a departure from the spirit in which the last ordinance was adopted, in which that our policy is not to, to proactively direct people to or advertise this location, it is to simply say, camping is prohibited in these public locations, and, and then if, if people are, are able to see, but, but there is something available, right? So, and, and direct people to services. And, and so I think, you know, simply saying things like, okay, there's not, you know, we're not advocating for services at this location, or we're not advocating for chariots at this location, does not mean that we're not advocating for services. I think our goal is for police to connect people to services, which is already their policy, and help get them into, to places that are going to help, but I just don't want to make the, this location the hub for that. And so that would be my fear, even with something as simple as a porta potty, would just say, okay, this, I think, is putting a little bit of a highlight, that this is where this is. So, that would be my concern with really all of these. I think some sort of demarcation that's potentially kind of subtle, or, or a fence, like, I am, I'm, I'm open to considering that for the, for the, like, good of the, the adjacent property owner. I would just want to see it done in a way that's not drawing unnecessary attention to that spot.
Thanks, Counsel Gilio. From my observation of all those months spent with the task force, all the service providers came from Salem. All the services are in Salem, and those third-party folks are doing a good job in Salem. If they wish to come out here and engage with that community and help the, direct the services back to Salem, that's where I land. Our city doesn't have the resources to do that, nor do we have the level of expertise. All the subject matter experts are in Salem, and that's what I would defer to. Counsel Sims.
As, as far as the recommendations, I think I'm pretty much in concurrence. I definitely, we need a fence, you know, to protect the farmer's property, demarcation line, and there's a, you know, the only other thing I would really push for is for the porta potty, because I just see, I, I think because I just see, I, I think we're going to have a lot of issues with some of the businesses around there if we don't do that. Because regardless of what you want to do, they're still going to go to the bathroom. So, I mean, you can't stop that. As far as chariots, buses, my sister's a chariots bus driver, and some of the stories of the homeless transiting from, you know, Salem up and down the canyon is pretty horrifying to me. It's, I mean, during, during COVID, all the fares were free, but even now, she has homeless walk on the buses all the time. They don't pay, they're not going to get in a fight over it. And it's, you know, some of the stories I've heard, I just don't want a, a superhighway coming from Salem to Wilco Road. So that does concern me a bit. So I'm not, I'm not really in favor of the chariots bus stop there. But the only thing I would say is the demarcation line, and I'd really strongly encourage just to have a porta potty there.
Mr. Mayor? Council Patty?
Thank you. So I, I just want to touch on one thing, and this hasn't been highlighted yet, and I think it should be. It needs to be for this conversation. This first recommendation explores providing basic facilities at this location, considering cost, health, and safety needs, okay? So the legislature passed House Bill 3115, okay? All right, that was back in 2021. The Oregon Mayors Association put forward a request for funding for exactly this type of thing, and the legislature didn't do anything. They did not put forward that funding to go ahead and support this. And so the reason I bring that up is, I want to be responsive to the task force recommendations here because I know they spend a lot of time on these, and I want them to understand why I'm not willing to pursue that at all. And that would be for the legislature's unresponsiveness to provide any kind of fiscal support for something like that. And in addition, I think I'm, I'm in, I'm in agreeance with not providing advocacy for busing more of these folks out here because we don't have the services that Salem has. And I think that we'd be putting them in disservice by encouraging more transportation out to this area. And then finally, I think the demarcation line is the fantastic idea just for understanding where that, that boundary is. I want to get answers as far as how many no trespassing signs are allowed. Yeah, I think that we need to start looking at a fence to, to protect that area and finding out what the fiscal impact of that is. And so that's, that's where I'm landing on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Orte?
To the point of the property owners' concerns with trespassing, you can have a trespass order put on any of your private property. I believe it lasts a year. You have to talk with Chief Johns about that. There is a limitation on time duration, but that allows the police to trespass people off of private property without you having to be there physically to do that. You have to have that on file. So that's for anyone interested in that.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Julia.
I just wanted to circle back around, just to kind of get a poll of where we're at in terms of the hour timeframe. I think you mentioned 11 hours, so I think you were in between kind of the 12 and 10, which I'm definitely open to as well. I would just, I would want to support at least bringing it to the 12-hour, because I think it was, it was, it was taken down to the, to the, it was, sorry, the timeframe that was opened up to 14 before, and we understood the rationale for that. And, and while I, I understand some of the rationale, I just don't believe that that recommendation really did adequately take into account, I think, the will of the people that was put forward in this survey. And that's really why I, I'm strongly supportive of a 11-hour or 10-hour timeframe, at least a 12. So I want to just kind of get, kind of what feedback, because I heard from Councilor Sims, and then maybe from?
I was thinking 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM for camping is what I thought, but
Yeah.
I, I can fudge on that. I'm not set on that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Council McDonald.
I'll say that I was in the, the voting majority for most of these recommendations, so I'm, I'm going to re-express my support for these, and I understand the rationale behind all of them. I tend to come down on the side of doing what we can that doesn't cost us extra money other than a little, some time to investigate, to get these people into services. Now, and the services, we are correct that the services are in Salem. If these people are going to get to Salem, I think it'd be a good idea for the bus to be there. This, this little patch of land, I'm not really convinced that having a porta potty or a garbage can there is going to entice people to come. It's very out in the open, exposed, it's going to be hot and unbearable in the summer, there's no shade, it's going to be wet and muddy in the winter. It's not exactly an inviting spot to be in the first place. So I'm pretty skeptical of, of arguments, you know, against trying to attract those, attract people with bus service or the porta potty. So I will speak on behalf of the rest, the majority of the task force in supporting these recommendations, as, as well as the timeframe. The other logic I would turn around as far as the survey on the timeframe goes is that the, if you look at that chart, the longer the timeframe is, the more support it got. The public didn't have an option to vote on a 14-hour timeframe. However, they voted for the longest one. The, the plurality voted for the longest timeframe. We don't know that if given any other option with some, with the rationale here, that they wouldn't have voted for that. And so, again, as speaking for the, the voting majority of the task force, which worked a lot of hours on this, I would continue to support the 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM timeframe.
Thank you. Let's move along with the motion if I could.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Julia.
I would make a motion to amend Resolution Number 1065 under 812120, Section 1. I'm going to amend it to read 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM, in concurrence with the recommendation that was given by Councilor Sims.
I'll second.
It's been a motion, the second, to change the hours. As, Council Julia, can you repeat it one more time?
Yeah, so we're amending Section 81220 to, to be the hours of 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
I'll second that motion.
There was a second already.
Oh.
There was. So the motion's been made to change the hours in 8:1220 to from 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Further discussion?
Yeah, I want to run and reiterate the task force's point there, that if there are minors that go to the school, in, in that population that, that, at that spot, the school does not open for breakfast until 7:40 PM. So you have a timeframe with that recommendation between 7:00 AM and 7:40 where they don't have a place to be. That is why we came up with the 8:00 AM ending time in the first place, so that they could be there until school starts, essentially. That was the recommendation. So that's, I want to reiterate that.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Council Patty?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I'm wondering, would the councilors in support of the current motion on the floor consider amending to 7:30 to thereby give them 10 minutes to get from that location to school?
I'd be okay with that.
I'd, yes. Do I need to retract my second?
Not yet. Council Julia?
I, I just, so, my argument on this is, first, I think when you come to homeless minors, I, I think that there's a lot of issues there. So I think that in terms of CPS, a lot of ways that we can get kids into safe environments, and I think that there are safe environments for kids to be from 7:00 AM to, to 8:00 AM. So whether that's McDonald's, or Roth's, or, there's a lot of spots that are safe and probably much safer than the camping spot that's provided. It's not exactly an ideal spot for any type of child, and I wouldn't want to actually encourage someone to be in that spot any longer if they're a minor. So if, yeah, so that would be the reason I, I was not convinced by that argument kind of initially. I'm also not really convinced now, but if we want to move it to 7:30, it's not obviously the, the end of the world, so.
All right, so Council Orte, if you want to draw your second, and then we'll make another motion.
I'll draw.
Okay. Can I get a second motion to figure out what we're doing here, folks?
I would, I'll, I'll amend my, I'll amend it to say 7:30 AM to 10:00 PM. Sorry, 8:00 PM. Sorry, it's 8:00 PM to 7:30 AM. Yeah.
Okay.
I will second.
It's been changed and seconded to be 8:00 PM to 7:30 AM. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Orte?
I seconded the motion, but I'm actually going to be a no, because if we are going to live by the spirit of this survey and many people that have come to the task force meetings, which really actually disappointed that, I'm thankful, thank you all that came here today. I'm really happy that you were here, actually, let me say that. I really wish that the people that had come and voiced their opinions previously would have come to us tonight, but thank you all for being here. With that said, I'm going to be a no tonight, because to Council Patty's point, and something that the mayor of Sandy said, Stan Pulliam, Pulliam, how do you say his name?
Stan Pullman.
Stan Pullman. This is an unfunded mandate, and we're using lots of our tax dollars that we really can't afford here in the city to deal with some of these issues. And so I feel like our legislators need to step up, and if they want us to provide this area, then they need to help us with that. So I'm going to be a no in solidarity with all the other people that said that they didn't want a camping spot here.
Counselor, sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just took a question for Counselor, man, oh my gosh, my last name is?
Council Orte, go ahead.
Orte, man, skipping me. It's ridiculous. So while I would, a few things. One, a no tonight, simply, while I understand the spirit of a no, a no is not voting for, is, is saying that it will still be allowed in residential areas tonight. So it's not saying, a no is not saying it's not allowed anywhere, it's not allowed in residential areas. The second thing is, even if you are on a no on the last one, I still, I would still appreciate your support for this amendment, and you could still be a no on the final vote, because this amendment is still going to, I think, get us closer to what the spirit of the survey is. I think the spirit of the survey is, we had 60% of the people who supported a timeframe who were for 10 hours or less. And where the task force was at was 14 hours. If we can get that to, you know, 11 and a half hours, you know, that's still closer to what I think the spirit of the public is saying. I definitely appreciate and in spirit, agree with that. And I think that this, a long time has been a conversation about to what degree do you work kind of a practical approach towards, a practical approach trying to get the best possible solution, given the unfair, unjust restraints that the state has put on us. And so I understand people who are taking a no, just a no route, which is great, and I totally respect that. I would just point out that a no right now is just allowing it in residential areas, and if we could maybe just vote on the amendment first, and then before we get to the no.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Orte?
I can be convinced. I will vote on your motion.
Thanks.
I want to remind the council, since we're talking about resources, it's not like 8:01, the PD's going to show up and say, you're out of here. You've got to remember that. It's just a timeframe. So there's going to be some limitations on that restriction anyhow, just from a man point, a resource perspective. With that, any more questions, any more discussion on that particular motion? All right. Would the council like to, all right, so let me make sure I got this right. Amending 8.12.20 from 8:00 PM to 7:30 AM, is that correct? Okay, all those in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose no?
No.
Motion carries 4-1. So that one's taken care of with time restriction, let's go on. What's the next top issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I believe that the only other thing in code that we would deal with before we could pass the ordinance would be just the location. The other things are all having to be done in terms of what are we directing staff time for to do more research on, things like that. Is that, is that correct, Julia?
Yes, whatever, if, if you so direct me, then I would come back at the next meeting with an update on whatever you've directed me to do, get cost estimates, find out costing for certain things, follow up with what, what the plan is.
Okay, let's talk about discussion, location, go ahead, Council Sims.
So I had talked about a secondary location of the sewage plant. After hearing what Lance had to say, I'm not interested in the sewage plant because there's a flooding event that's probably going to happen, so, well, it will happen, 100%, it will happen at some point. So I am definitely on board with Wilco Road. I just don't see, I see no other alternative, it's just, there's nowhere else to do it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion for Wilco Road to be the location.
Just to clarify, the motion will be to approve ordinance
Because it's laid out.
1065.
Right, because Wilco Road's laid out in, okay.
Yeah, as amended.
Okay, yep, gotcha. Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Patty?
I move we approve ordinance 1065 as amended.
Second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 1065 as amended. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Orte?
In light of Counselor Julia's comments, which I agree with, under duress, I will have to vote for this, because I don't want camping in residential areas, and that was definitely made clear by the people in the survey and the people at the task force. If I had my way, then we wouldn't do it at all. So that is my explanation for my now-changed yes vote, to yes.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Julia?
I would also, I would like to say the same thing, I will be voting yes, but I, I will also agree, I think that this is not, as I've said kind of throughout, this is not, this, this is not about allowing an established camp. This is not about setting up a managed camp, an established camp, anything like that. This is simply a spot, sleeping at night is not prohibited in one area, and, and it's the result of a state, a state mandate that I disagree with, and also, some also case law as well. The other thing is, just generally speaking, staten isn't going to fix this issue, right? This is, this has been, and I think the, the sheriff said, said a lot that I really, really agree with, that a lot of these issues when it comes to homelessness come down to, we need to fix Measure 110, we need to fix ways that we can actually be given enforcement ability to get people the help they need, because that's the issue. Right now, you need that enforcement element to be able to help people get into rehab, help them get the help that they need. And so just with all that being said, I am going to vote yes, because I do think it's the worst, it's the best of the worst options, it's the best of the bad options, and, yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one more thing.
Council Orte?
I said it previously in a previous meeting, but I'll say it again, that how we are treating our unhoused population is not compassionate. And what the legislature has passed down and mandated on us to do is not, they'll keep telling us that it's for the good of the community, and I did hear at the League of Oregon Cities Conference, actually, some, some positive stories of services that were given and people that have helped, and so that was really encouraging. But as been stated by several of our residents, and as evidence of our budget, we don't have those resources. We're, we're not given any of those resources, and, um, we're really put in a difficult situation. And so I want everyone to know that we have really been thinking hard about this and, um, this, this isn't coming from a place of not being compassionate for people. I really hope that that comes across. Um, the passionate thing to do is to get people into services. One, measure one-ten was not that. And if you were led to believe that and you voted for it, I would really encourage you to, um, email your representative Ed Deal and Senator Gerard and tell them that story, because they need to hear that. And they need to be able to pass that along to their colleagues, because there's, they're fighting an uphill battle with that. Um, including, uh, our governor, Tina Kotek, who said that she would not sign anything that would repeal that. So we need to hear those stories. We need to know how it's affecting people. Um, if you have stories of, if you voted no for it and it's negatively impacted you, I'd really encourage you to do the same. Um, because we can't really do anything about that up here. But also, um, you need to email your legislature and let them know that we need resources if we're gonna continue to do this. Because even if that's repealed, we still need help with it.
Thank you, Counselor Ort. Anybody else? Yeah, Ms. Mayor. Counselor McDonald, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I understand the, the commentary and concerns about measure one-ten. I wanna, I wanna also rewind the clock a little bit. Um, the homeless problem doesn't start with measure one-ten. Um, we have, uh, as a state and as a country, been neglecting to build enough housing supply for forty years plus, forty-five, fifty years. Um, all of that can be seen in the, in the cost of real estate and homes these days. Um, there's also been a decline in state capacity for mental health, uh, services. Um, you know, we used to be, there used to be a, the big mental health hospital in Salem, or mental, the mental hospital in Salem, that is no longer that. Um, so all these, all these declines in, in basically the, an effort to build, uh, for our communities has, has led to this. Um, measure one-ten did exacerbate some of the issues, but, um, I want us to take a look at our, our longer history and realize what we've done in, in restricting the supply of homes for everyone. Um, with that, I think, um, I'm gonna be nitpicking if I argue too much more about the timeframe on the, on our little spot here. Um, so I will be in support of this ordinance as amended.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Sims? Counselor Patty? Good. Well, I wanna, uh, call for the question then at this point. So, um, it's been moved and seconded to approve, uh, ordinance ten sixty-five with amendment as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I'm sorry, Mayor. Um, for an ordinance, you need to do a roll call.
Correct, all right, sorry.
I'm ready.
Alyssa, will you poll the council?
I would love to. Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Julio?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you all. And I will say one thing, um, in November of last year is when this whole thing started. So we've been working on almost a year where the former mayor appointed the task force, discussed it, pulled it together. And they started convening in January around there, so it's been a heavy lift by all of you. I know that. Well, it's been a heavy lift by the task force. I really appreciate their efforts to tackle this as a community. I really appreciate the involvement of the community. Between both surveys, it was almost a thousand responses, correct? That's what true community does when there's an issue to tackle. Um, and to that note, um, it is an issue that we were thrust upon. We didn't create this. The council didn't create this. The city didn't create it. It was thrust upon us by the legislature. And so to that note, elections have consequences and keep remembering that happens when you go to the polls. With that, I'll move on. Communication from city staff.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Counsel, Counselor Julio.
Sorry, before we move on, are there any other thoughts that we want to provide, just clarity in terms of the other things that are not in statute? So there's the, I, I, I feel like, feels like there's consensus in terms of not on the bus, um, not advocating for services to come to Staton. Um, and then I think that, and it seems like the fencing or something like that, we want to investigate that. Um, then the last one is the basic facilities. Is that something we want to explore providing in terms of explore, explore providing porta potties, things like that? Is that something we want to say, hey, let's see how many people come to this first? Um, where are we kinda, I think that, and then, and then maybe, you know, if, if you feel like I did not sum those up right, and if that's not the opinion of council, um, set me straight, but I just wanted to make sure we have kind of clarity on that before we move on.
Counsel, Counselor Sims?
I definitely want to explore the, the services of, uh, as far as porta potty and garbage. I don't, I want to keep it simple. I don't want to get too extravagant. And, uh, the, the fence, that's what I support.
Counselor McDonald?
Um, I would reiterate support for, um, I think the, the task force was unanimous, if not nearly unanimous, on supporting the, um, community services to come out and con, make contacts with our homeless individuals and make more effort to provide services for them, not to provide them here in town, but to make sure that the, the individuals we have here in town are aware, um, and offer those services to them, while the services are, are indeed based in Salem. So I think we should continue with that. Um, yeah, again, the logistics around providing porta potty and trash services at this location. I still think we should explore that. Um, we're gonna have, uh, cleanup issues there regardless. My, I mean, my hope is that it doesn't get used, right? The hope is that, you know, our, the, the homeless population that we have, while small, um, either moves somewhere else or gets out of homelessness, um, and we don't have to worry about it at all. Um, if that's not the case, however, I think having those very basic amenities there, um, is gonna help, you know, rather than, rather take trash out of a trash can than off the ground. Um, just makes things easier. So, uh, I know there's a little bit of a cost and claim there, but there's still some logistics about how, you know, can you get the trash truck there to pick up something? Can you, um, can we get it in there? Um, so I would still like to investigate that as, as, as well as the costs. I guess that's all I have to say about that.
Counselor Patty?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, so for me, um, I think I've already expressed what I think of the chariot service. Uh, again, I think that's a disservice to these folks, bringing them out here where we have this strip of land. And I, I mean, I think that there's better resources in Salem. Uh, with regard to advocating for services to come to Staton on a regular basis to provide support and resources to those experiencing homeless, I want to know more about what that looks like. If it's to Ben's point where, excuse me, Counselor McDonald, forgive me. Uh, if it's, if it's what he's describing, where we're, we're trying to give these, these folks a hand up out of this situation? Yeah, I'm in, I'm in support of that, especially, you know, if they're part of our community, we want to get them out of there. Um, but as far as, you know, providing facilities, a trash can, these things, I think I covered that. Um, the state legislature is not supporting these services to them. They made this legislation. We have already spent countless hours of staff time that is paid by the taxpayers of Staton, okay? And they've spent that money for that, for, for trying to find the best solution to this problem. And here we have it. So, you know, at this point, I'm not, I'm not interested in that. Uh, you know, if there's some kind of funding behind it, I'm willing to talk about it, have a conversation. Uh, the demarcation is of great interest to me at this point to assist our law enforcement and knowing where that area is and knowing where the boundary is. Um, and I want to know what a fence is gonna, you know, again, fiscal impact, right? So I guess that's where I'm at on all that.
Counselor Ort?
Um, I am, um, I'd like to know how much a fence is gonna cost and, uh, figure out how we can do that, because I want to be able to protect, um, the property owners surrounding that area. Um, I'm reminded of this story of the gentleman that came, I apologize, I think it was to one of our task force meetings. Um, and he was a firefighter in a, um, larger city nearby, as he quoted. And, um, they had to take the porta potties away because people were lighting them on fire and, um, there's lots of property damage to the point where they were just giving people buckets. And while that is an extreme issue and an extreme scenario, um, I, that's what I think of, and I'm not interested in using more of our money, um, to go towards that.
Thank you. Julia, got direction from that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. If the council's good with it, I'm gonna move on. Everything comprehensive? Counselor Julio, you good?
Yeah.
Thank you. Communication from city staff.
So I have, um, a bit, so bear with me. Um, first, um, I'm gonna end with my summary of my conferences, because I'm hoping that counselors might chime in. But, so I'm gonna start actually with asking Alyssa. There's been a little bit on social media about our pool and our pool closures and our pool employees. So I wanted Alyssa, who is now, um, supervising the pool, um, to give a little bit of information about, um, how we hire kids or teens or people, adults as well. Sorry, that was really inappropriate.
Anyone.
Humans. We hire humans. Uh, and, um, yeah, so go ahead, Alyssa, sorry.
So what we do is, anybody can apply. Anybody sitting at this table can apply. You don't have to have been a lifeguard before, come in with a certification. Um, part of what Emily can do, as long as we have three or more, um, she can do a certification class. And so we will take applications from any, literally anyone over the fifteen and over. There is an age limit. Um, and right now, a big push of what we're looking for are people that can work during the morning hours, um, daytime hours to cover. We have a lot of students, college students, high school, who of course are back in school now. And, um, so that, that's, did I answer what you were looking for?
Um, yes, and we, um, have just recently hired some people who have gone through that certification. So we're hoping that we will be back to normal hours soon.
I believe this week we are.
This week. Um, but that said, we still encourage anybody to apply. Um, you don't have to be lifeguard certified. Um, but we really encourage people that can work during school hours to apply, because that's been our biggest challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You do not pay for the, well, go ahead.
The, the city will.
Yeah.
Yes, um, when we're offering it, we will.
I just wanted to clarify, you don't have to have the training, but you need to attain the training.
Yeah, it would be, yes, thank you for that clarification.
We're not just throwing anybody out on deck. Absolutely not.
We ensure that they are properly certified before they start.
In order to, um, actually become said lifeguard, you would have to pass the certification course.
Any questions about that? Because I've got, I had a couple of questions from counselors over the weekend about that, so I wanted to make sure that I responded to that. Um, also, we're super excited about Halloween coming up in a week and a half. Um, there will be trick or treating in downtown from three-thirty to five-thirty. Um, I got eight bags of Ha- Halloween candy from Costco this weekend, so excited to hand that out to all of the children in the community. And then the library is, um, where did Janna go? Um, the library is also doing, um, their trick or treating from three-thirty to five-thirty as well? Four to five-thirty. Um, and unless Chief Johns or Lance had anything before I give my spiel, Chief Johns is coming up to say, to give you guys an update.
So I'm sure you've noticed the pink highlights. So, um, we just finished wearing purple, um, to bring awareness to domestic violence and prevention. And then now, uh, the next few weeks, we'll wear pink for, um, breast cancer awareness. And then, um, we're bringing back Coffee with the Cops, so we've got a date set with McDonald's, um, November thirteenth. We'll start at seven-thirty in the morning. Anyone that wants to stop in, have a conversation, um, we'll stay till nine. And, um, coffee's provided. We will do those quarterly at McDonald's, and then we're looking at, um, some other locations. In addition, November is, uh, no shave November, so we use it as an opportunity for team building, but also, um, as a fundraiser. So the officers that want to participate, make a donation to the canned cancer through Saniam, um, hospitals and clinics. And then they have the opportunity to grow facial hair the whole month, and then we vote on the best Paul Bunyan beard and, uh, I forget the other one. But it is fun. The guys enjoy it, and, uh, we have, we have fun too, the ladies. Um, and then, you know, we find ways that we can, uh, highlight throughout the month and, uh, do fundraising for the canned cancer. And then the other thing, we've sent out some notices about family building blocks. And, um, we're gonna be the point of collection for if anyone on council or any of the city departments want to adopt, um, either children or adults to buy gifts for. Usually it's a blanket or coat, and then a book and a toy. Um, so it's fun, you know, it's a neat thing to do. Um, my boys go shopping with me to help pick out gifts for other kids. And then, um, we're providing them to family building blocks to distribute. So should have an email and then, um, get those back to me, and then we'll also collect the gifts at, uh, the police department for that. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm gonna read something. Sorry, I wrote it down, because I wanted to make sure I captured everything and didn't just ramble. Um, so I had the pleasure of spending Sunday through Wednesday of the week before last at the ICMA, which is the International City Manager Association Conference in Austin, Texas, along with fifty-four hundred other attendees. I learned a lot, um, I learned a lot and I'm coming back with a lot of ideas. Some of the sessions I attended were related to leveraging relationships to revitalize downtowns, combating change exhaustion, engaging residents, ri, ri, sorry, bridging the gap between management and politics, managing the challenges and opportunities of small-town America, establishing and maintaining an effective council and manager relationship. There were also four general sessions that were truly amazing and inspiring. The opening session keynote was none other than Emmett Smith. Um, he shared insights on the value of change, setting goals and teamwork. It was a really fun and engaging presentation. Monday general session speaker was Lindsay Pollak, who spoke on generational differences and the importance of understanding that generational diversity is an opportunity, not a problem to solve. She also had great advice on understanding what motivates people of different generations and not just assuming. Tuesday general session was speaker Erica Dewan, speaking on the power of connectional intelligence in this new age, digital, this new digital, digital age. The final and for me most inspiring general sex session speaker was Dr. Sam Ramsey on Wednesday. He fought against many odds and obstacles and ended up discovering information about a mite that affects honeybees. His outside-the-box thinking, persistence, and questioning the status quo helped him disprove a long-held assumption that no one else took the time to question. This past week, um, Counselor Sims, Patty and Ort and I attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference in Eugene. It was a great opportunity to network and learn from colleagues from around the state. Sessions that I attended included municipal marketing campaign, building community support for your city's infrastructure projects, maximizing existing revenue and looking for new sources of revenue, increasing community and civic engagement in both urban and rural areas, managing public information in the age of online misinformation, top three legal issues facing cities and addressing Oregon's homeless crisis. Um, both of these conferences both validated some great things that we're already doing and inspired some ideas for improvement. I will lean in more, um, to our intentional, to our internal workings to ensure that staff has more understanding and ownership of their role in customer service and community engagement. I will also continue to use and find ways and avenues to engage the community. Um, I'm very thankful to have Christian on board to help me implement some of this stuff. Um, some of the ideas I, um, have include, and I'm saying this out loud to some for the first time, so hope it's, they're, they're not gonna happen tomorrow. Um, so I'll just put that out there. Um, establishing a citizens academy to share with the public more about what the city departments do, a multicultural celebration centered around the variety of cuisine offered in, in Staton, and identifying opportunities for council to reach out to members of the community, especially youth, by offering in limited quantity perhaps, um, tokens for pool drop-ins. Um, and I'll be talking to council about some of these ideas in the coming weeks and months. And with that, that concludes my, um, comments, and I hope that counselors would be willing to share what they heard. to share what they heard or learned or got from the conference as well.
Thank you, Julia. Anybody have questions for Julia? Since you raised your hand first, we'll let you go, Counselor Sims. Go ahead.
The conference was really good. I thought it was a good learning experience. There's 241 cities in Oregon and I found out we're all in the same boat. Everybody's dealing with homeless, infrastructure, water and sewer capital improvements, everybody's dealing with the same thing because money's not trickling down to the cities to fix all these things. But I learned I don't know a lot of things, that was definitely for sure, but I did learn a lot at the conference, it was very beneficial.
Counselor Patty?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I appreciate that. Two things. One is kind of sad and it's sort of back on the homeless stuff, so I'm just going to touch on it briefly. So at the conference, it was, it was very educational for me and I'm sorry to say that's the first time I've actually attended it. I will say that, you know, I, I think that some of our viewpoints up here weren't as represented at the conference for sure, especially as how our town would like us to face the homeless issue. Definitely, we are the minority in that opinion in Oregon, I will tell you that. And I also would encourage some of you to look over to Cottage Grove and how some of these code amendments went and how this could go tonight, right? And the reason I say that is there isn't that many people in attendance tonight and I, I take that as something positive because we've had a lot of people attend already and they've had their voices heard. And we've, we've, we've put that into, to code here, those solutions. And so I just think that's a, that's a positive thing. And so I just wanted to, to point you all to that example of how not to do things, not to tackle this challenge for sure. And then the other thing too, I, I just wanted to touch on and introduce to council and see if we could get some support for this and I've already brought it up with the mayor. We heard at the conference about a day that was devoted within another jurisdiction where all their committees, subcommittees and commissions would meet together yearly to kind of go over council goals and objectives and just to make sure we all had the same unified vision we were proceeding towards. And it's kind of sounds like this, this event's done up in a way that sort of honors all those volunteers and those volunteers' hours. And I think that that definitely could incur some funding needs. And so, I mean, that's, that's probably going to be a fiscal ask at some point. But I think that this is a really cool concept and I would encourage all of you to consider it in 2024.
Thank you. Counselor Oort?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This was my first time attending the League of Oregon Cities Conference as well and I found it, some of the things a little discouraging, kind of like Counselor Patty said, that our town, it's a, it was a reminder that we are kind of insulated and we're a little in the minority in our thinking. However, I am thankful that we are around some like-minded people that can be uplifting and encouraging as well. But some of the sessions that I went to included some information on economic development and how some cities are helping bolster that, including helping small businesses. And so I wrote down some ideas, I don't have any off the top of my head, but just things that we can implement here or ways that we can help our small businesses grow. Or if there are other entrepreneurs that are looking to start businesses, loans that they can use, grant money and then also there are organizations out there that you just don't know about, they have lots of funding to help with, helping businesses learn how to do accounting or budgeting, things that you need to know to run a successful business. And so we can have those, we can have those, we don't necessarily have to have those services, but we can have the, that information available. So that was really exciting. And then also, we had an opportunity to talk with some Congress member's staff and kind of get the inside scoop on how to build relationships with them so that we can hopefully get funding for our area. And I want to give a kudos to Julia because as soon as she came on, she really hit the ground running with that. She got us a lobbyist and really just started making those relationships so that our legislators in, on the state side and federally know what our struggles are, which are, a lot of communities are going through the same things, but what our struggles are and making that connection so that when funding does come around, they are thinking about us, we're top of mind. And so that really, that session really illustrated that point of what Julia is already doing and that we can do it even more. And so just really reiterating that relationships are important in gaining successful funding for our area. So it was, it was a, it was a good conference.
Thank you, Counselor Oort. I think what you all just described really highlights what the council's all about. A lot of people think that it's two meetings a month and you're done. It's by far larger than that, folks. And to concur with what you guys found out, we went to that meeting when I attended the mayor's conference this summer, same issue, right? I was in the meeting with all the mayors in the state and faced the same challenges, the same way to tackle them, the same ideas. And so what I am seeing over the last year with everything we're tackling here, you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate the effort, I appreciate the input, I appreciate all the volunteer services from the folks in the community. Really makes a big difference. So to your point, David, I think that your idea is awesome. I think we talked about it from a grassroots perspective, maybe in January initially, but let's try to formalize that and put something on the books. And with that, Julia, can you remind everybody how many more openings we have for the committees?
Oh, gosh.
I can probably rattle them off if you don't remember.
I'm going to make Alyssa do that.
Go ahead, Alyssa.
Okay, I was like, I know this, like right off the top of my head.
I know we have three budget committee.
Yes, three budget committee. I believe there are two. I'm pulling it up on my little computer right here, real quick. Let's see, library board, we have an application pending on that, which is just the one opening. So three on budget, two on parks board, and that's it. Oh, you're right. There is one open on planning commission.
Well, there you hear it. So do you want to put your hat in the ring or step into the ring and help out? Come on.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gilio?
I just, if for, for those who are interested, what, what's the best way to, to?
So if you, I can definitely answer that. If you go to the website, there is an application. It's under the, sorry, let me scroll up here. Under the menu for city government, there's a boards and commissions option there. Or if you want us just to email you a copy of the application, you can email us at citigovernment@statonoregon.gov and we can email that to you as well.
Great.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else?
Yep, real quick, for those of us who can't do the online things, can we walk down to City Hall and fill this out on paper?
You absolutely can. We will print it and let you fill it out.
I don't want anyone to have an excuse.
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gilio?
I did have one thing and I know it's, you know, we have had a long meeting, but I just wanted to, just to remind us to have our thoughts and prayers with Israel and Gaza as, yeah, as they are, I mean, we think our, our little problems here are bad. That's, that's, that's really, that's really tough. And so just a reminder of those living in war, Ukraine and Russia as well, just, just those who, you know, tonight, you know, aren't sleeping, you know? And, and just those who have, who've already lost loved ones, there's so much. So just a reminder to have that, them and our thoughts and our prayers, yeah, and just, just a reminder. And I know that people in our community, in our staff, have, have been personally touched as well. So we just want to make sure that we are remembering those people and, and just praying for them. That's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Oort?
Fort Hills is having a harvest festival on October 29th from 5:00 to 7:30. So if you have kiddos that want more candy, bring them over. Just sugar them up.
And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.